Manchester Community Schools Board of Trustees Meeting to order. Could all please rise, remove your hats, and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Raymer?
Here.
Mr. Booker is absent. Mr. Brubaker?
Here.
Mr. Espisette?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Hensley?
Here.
Dave Turflinger is here. Superintendent Whelan?
Here.
And Mark France, legal counsel. Uh, we have some additions and deletions. The agenda said that we were having an L-16 hearing tonight. That has been canceled. So as a result of that, 7.10 and 7.12 will both be removed from the agenda for tonight. We are going to add 8.1A, which will be a committee discussion. It'll be a discussion item on the open letter committee from Wabash. 81B will be Heartland Career Center. 81C will be the legislative update. And we have a 7.13 addition, Business Manager Job Description. Superintendent Whelan, do you have any other things to add?
Yeah, in addition to under 7.2, which is approved employment, we do have an adjustment there and we're going to, I'm recommending that Matt Burlingame and Rex Moore be named as the interim co-head coaches for the remainder of this wrestling season.
Okay, so that's gonna replace the original 7.12 then?
Well, 7.2 is all of the employment.
Is what I said we were eliminating for tonight?
Yeah.
You're talking about 7.2?
7.2.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's the employment pieces and we approve all of those employments at the same time. And so it's just a, because we already have, there was a mention of Coach Burlingame in there. So we can eliminate that and add 7.13, or we can just amend 7.2. Which one do you wanna do?
It's up to you whether you wanna do.
I'll just, when we do the employment, I'll just include them in there for the employment piece.
That's fine. Board, any other changes, additions, deletions? Okay, with that, when we approve this agenda, that means that you've read your packets and you're ready to proceed with the meeting. So do a roll call vote. Mr. Espisette? Ready to approve the agenda?
Oh, yeah, can you repeat the additions, please?
Okay, the additions are 7.13, which is a Business Manager Job Description. 81A is a committee discussion regarding the open letter invitation that was sent to the board. That's a discussion item only. 7.13, the Business Manager, that's an action item. 81B would be the Heartland Career. And 81C would be the legislative report. And 7.10 and 7.12 were both removed.
Okay, so you're asking me to approve it?
Or approve the agenda, yeah.
Sure, yep.
Mr. Brubaker?
Yes.
Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Hensley?
Yes.
And I vote yes. With that, um, hang on a second, I lost my place here. We have a slow internet tonight. Also, this meeting is not being livestreamed tonight because the internet cable was cut today. So we're recording it and it'll be posted later. At this time, on agenda items, any hearing of patrons? Nice to see some full seats, nobody's got anything to say, huh? Okay, moving on. Recognition, Superintendent Whelan?
Actually, I'll turn it over to Dr. John Lippi, he has some guests here tonight, so.
So I asked, check, check, yeah, I asked Sharon Layman to come with some students tonight that we would like to recognize, so Sharon Layman, our choir teacher at the high school.
Good evening, it's an honor for us to be here tonight and I thank you for the opportunity to honor these students. So this fall, when I presented the All-State opportunity to my students, I set two goals before them that I had. One was to get a freshman selected this year and two was to get four students selected into All-State. Since I've been here, it's kind of gradually increased from one to two, last year was three. So I set before them four students. We came really close to getting a freshman selected by one point, but we did get our four, our four in. And one of them could not be here tonight, she got scheduled to work. So I would like to introduce to you our All-State students. So Alicia Edwards is a senior and she will be singing alto. Peyton Hanby is a junior, she's also singing alto. Kalen Camp is a sophomore soprano. And then Sky McCullough was the one who couldn't be here and she's a senior singing soprano. I could talk a long time about All-State because it's something that I'm super passionate about. I believe in it so strongly that I actually serve as the chairperson for Area 4A, which is kind of our region. I could talk a long time, but I'm gonna try not to. I do wanna just kinda give you some numbers and just kind of explain what All-State Honor Choir is. It's really exactly what it sounds like. Students from all over the state audition for a spot in this competitive choir. The state is divided into regions. Each region has a quota for the number of students that can be selected. And just so you have an idea of the competition, our area includes all schools in the counties of Adams, Huntington, Casiosco, Wabash, Wells, and Whitley. Not all students, or not all teachers send students to auditions, not all schools participate, but that is our area. And our quota is 12 for that whole area, three sopranos, three altos, three tenors, and three basses. This year, 30 students auditioned, representing all of the Wabash County Schools, Bluffton, and South Adams. The audition consists of prepare, performing a prepared piece. Everybody sings the same piece for a vocal judge. And then they have to sight read three exercises for a different sight reading judge. That's the part that usually scares people, the sight reading. But our students tend to do really well because we do that as a part of our daily classwork. And just as a shout out to Kalen, out of all 30 students from our area that auditioned, Kalen had the highest sight reading score in our area. So the actual All-State concert is in January. The students right now are just in the preparation stage. They've had four rehearsals with the area, the 12 students from our area. And they've prepared the pieces by working on them individually. And then in January, they'll spend two days in Fort Wayne with 250 voices from around the state. And a distinguished guest director, they bring in nationally recognized choral directors to work with the students. They'll refine and polish the repertoire and then they will give a final performance. Even though the event hasn't happened yet, I wanted to give the students a chance to briefly share a little of their experience. So I've asked Peyton to talk about what she has enjoyed about the area rehearsals and what she's looking forward to in terms of the actual big event.
Alright, so I would have to say the best thing about the area rehearsals is just knowing that everyone that's there wants to be there and we've all worked really hard to be there. So it just makes it a really good experience knowing that we all share the same passion and we all have the same work ethic for this. And then finally, I would say that what I'm looking forward to most is just the performance itself, how rewarding it is sharing with everyone how much we have worked on and how hard we have worked because just sharing that music with everyone is really rewarding. And just seeing how much it makes everyone happy and how much they enjoy it is really refreshing and it just makes us feel accomplished, so.
Alicia's gonna talk briefly about one of her favorite pieces and what she's learned musically by working on it.
I would say out of all the pieces, we were doing about, I think, six. My favorite piece would be Himne. The composer is Rolf Temin and he is a South African composer. And I would say it's my favorite because it gives me the headache the most, like it gives me a really bad headache. It's a challenge.
It's hard.
And I love to be challenged, I love to push myself and strive to be like the best I can be. And in All-State, it's what it does for me, especially with this piece. I'm not gonna say a lot of musical terms because I don't know if it would come across the minds, but I would say throughout the piece, there are a lot of different measures right after another, right after another, that have different time signatures. So you have to really like be focused and remember your part because you're like seeing a different rhythm in each measure. And there are a lot of accents, so you have to like, for some certain notes, sing like it, like push the note more than others. And I think another challenge for me would just be like the notes in general. There are a lot of sharps, there are a lot of flats, and it's been the hardest for me to memorize. So I've been taking a lot of my hours throughout the week and focusing on just this piece to make sure to get it perfect. And yeah, basically it's just a challenge and I'm here for it.
Thank you. Alright, awesome. And then I asked Kalen to just talk about how the All-State experience from preparing for the audition to actually doing the audition, to being selected and working on the music has helped develop her confidence and composure.
It really helped my confidence because even like going to the audition is very scary because of how many people are there and the fact that a lot of people do not make it their first year into this. And so it was my first year trying out. And I tried out and I thought I did very good, but I was also very scared and I was very doubtful of myself. I did not think I made it at all. And somebody told me to check my email and I checked my email and I had made it. And it was a huge surprise to me. And ever since then, I've really been a lot more confident about myself and I don't doubt myself at all, especially chorally. And I can feel that all of the preparation I put into it has helped me throughout the whole time I've been singing. Ever since that audition, I have known what I'm doing and I have been extremely confident in myself.
Thank you for your time and attention. I encourage you to consider attending the performance. It's at the Embassy Theater in Fort Wayne, a beautiful venue for them to perform in. It's Saturday, January 14. I don't have the time in my head right now, but it's usually a late afternoon, evening time. There is really nothing quite like hearing 250 of Indiana's top voices from around the state perform in the embassy under the baton of a distinguished guest director. And I have no doubt that everybody there is gonna be uplifted, inspired, blessed by the performance. So thank you for your time, we've really enjoyed being here, thanks.
Any questions from the board, comments?
I thought, are we gonna get a little sample?
You have to come to the concert.
Get an answer. I would like to make a comment to the three young ladies, you know. I see a lot of it today that's missing and all three of you possess it. And maybe it's because you're singers and musicians and you're used to standing in front of people. But I was watching you as you were speaking and you did a very good job. You were making eye contact with the people you were presenting to and you were very well spoken. And congratulations.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Peyton, Alicia, and Kalen. You know, that's an awful lot of additional work that you guys have to do. And so I, you know, respect you a lot for doing it and representing Manchester Community Schools. And then also to Mrs. Layman, I know it takes a lot out of the, out of the teachers too. So I'm sure she's plenty proud of you guys, but thank you for representing our district so well. So keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Financial report, Superintendent Whelan?
So, Board, you have the financials in your packet, our emergent, or, I'm sorry, our education fund is at 1.67 million. Our operations fund is at a negative 1.1 million. But remember, we're still waiting on the property taxes that should come by the end of December. Food service is at a positive 198,000. And then textbook fees is about negative 185,000 right now. But some of that is because we do get revenue from the state for the textbook reimbursement. And then we're getting ready to send out another round of mailers to remind parents that they need to log in and pay for those. So very, you know, kinda what we were forecasting for our budget so far, and that's where we're at.
Do I have a motion to accept the financial report? Some of. Mr. Raymer, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Espisette, seconded. Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, do we know a firm number now from the county?
Not yet, not yet. We're, soon as I get the 1782, which is, comes from the state to kinda solidify that, I'll share that with you guys, so.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Espisette?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Hensley?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker?
Yes.
Motion carries, 6-0. Claims are in your packet, Board. Do we need to open that and go over it? Is there any questions? Okay. Minutes are in your packet. Donations, uh... Mr. Espisette, would you read the donations, please?
Yeah, I don't have them open.
I can.
Yeah.
Who does? Mr. Raymer?
Alright, we have a $20 donation to MIS for the Student Council from Alan Binkard. A $1,200 donation to MIS for the GRIT program from Walmart. A $1,000 donation from, to MIS for the GRIT program from the American Legion. Two 75-inch TVs for MIS for the GRIT program to be used in the Commons area from Liquid Assets. $50 Amazon gift card for MIS for the GRIT program from the Pedden family. $20 Chills gift card for MIS GRIT program from the Weaver family. $10 Chills gift card for MIS GRIT program from the Alger family. $1,000 donation to MIS GRIT program from Poet. $185 to the MJSHS Athletic Program from various donors in memory of Steve White. $245 donation to the MJSHS Band Program, various donors in memory of Jay Van Landingham. $120 donated to the MJSHS AP Environmental Science Trip West from Judd and Joanne Case. $500 donation to MJSHS AP Environmental Science Trip West from Gary Dietz in memory of LeAnn Dietz. $851 donation to MJSHS AP Environmental Science Trip West from various donors. $1,000 donation to the FFA program from an anonymous donor. And $570 to the MJSHS Athletic Program from various donors in memory of Shirley Williams. Totalling $6,771, remark immunity.
Very good. Superintendent Whelan, you wanna do facility rentals, please?
Yes. Thank you for the donations. So we have one facility rental and that's with Tri-Cappa and that's for one of their fundraisers. And we do waive the fees for them because a lot of the money comes right back to the schools in some way, shape, or form, so.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the consent items? 6-1, claims, 6-2 minutes, 6-3 grants, 6-4 donations, 6-5 facility rentals.
I'll motion.
Mr. Hensley, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Brubaker, any discussion or questions?
Yeah, back to the donations. Every once in a while, we do have donations made in the memory of people. And tonight, we actually had four, which is outstanding. So, you know, I just wanted to go over a little bit. Steve White was actually a 1971 grad of Manchester Junior, Junior, or Manchester High School. And his kids went here and then also he has grandkids here. So I appreciate the donation and his memory. Jay Van Landingham, longtime supporter of Everything Band. You know, he actually was an assistant for our marching band for eight years back from 2004 to 2012 and played a big role in the different band groups here in, in the community. LeAnn Dietz didn't live here, but she does have grandchildren in our corporation and several of the things that her husband Jerry has donated to have benefited students with Manchester Community Schools. And then lastly, Shirley Williams, her and her husband Jack have been longtime Squire supporters. And so it doesn't surprise me that they did donate to Manchester Athletic. So I just, you know, huge credit to all these families and thanks for, you know, supporting our schools in memory of your loved ones, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Superintendent Whelan. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion, comments? Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Espisette?
Approve.
Mr. Brubaker?
Approve.
Mr. Raymer?
Approve.
I vote yes. Mr. Hensley?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Okay, consent items are 6-0. Recommendations for approval? Superintendent Whelan, you wanna do the resignations?
Yeah, so we had, we had three resignations. Renessa Ellett is a MES Special Education Paraprofessional. Kelly Kerr as a junior, senior high school super, study hall supervision. And then Byron Sweet as the junior high and high school wrestling coach. So those are the three resignations.
Okay, we're gonna do resignations and employment together, if you wanna go ahead and do the employment.
Okay, so the employment, Jason Meredith as an assistant science coach, Science Olympiad coach. Michael Van as a junior high boys' basketball coach volunteer. Karen Daniels as the pre-K department head. Wade France is a volunteer wrestling assistant. Ashton Bradford-Johnson is a junior high head track coach. Logan Irwin as a varsity basketball coach. He was volunteering and now he's in a paid position. This is one of the modifications. Matt Burlingame was gonna be a paid assistant, now he's going to be the co-head coach. And that's just interim to finish out this, this season with Rex Moore. And then Ella Cockenbush as the winter guard coach. And then Karen Hewitt as a part-time cook at MIS.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve 7.1 resignations and 7.2 for employment?
I'll motion.
Mr. Raymer, I saw your hand up. Mr. Brubaker, we got a first and second. Any discussion, questions, comments?
Question. Where is Rex Moore's? Are we just adding that?
He's been an assistant coach and so we're just going to, they're going to split the duties as the head coach. Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Espisette?
Approve.
Mr. Brubaker?
Yes.
Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Hensley?
Yes.
And I vote yes. 6-0, Missy. Okay, Superintendent Whelan, 7.3, Manchester Winter Camp Cheerleading.
This is something they do each year and, and they're basically just asking for permission to promote it through us and then also use our facilities. So just a common camp that we do during the school year.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve 7.3?
I'll motion.
Mr. Hensley? Mr. Brubaker? Any comments, questions? Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Brubaker?
Approve.
Mr. Raymer?
Approve.
Mr. Espisette?
Approve.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Hensley?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. 7.4, approved classified staff wages. Superintendent Whelan, please.
Okay, so with the, we'd already approved the collective bargaining agreement. And so then we look at what we can do for classified staff, which is basically everybody who's, who's not a teacher or an administrator. And so there's, most of them are paid by the hour. And so my recommendation is to increase all of those pay rates for returning employees by 25 cents per hour. And then on top of the, besides the hourly employees, our bus drivers are paid a little bit differently than that. They are paid by day. And so I'm recommending that we increase that by $2 per day. And then the mid-trip rate, so we do have drivers who drive during the day for different routes, increase that by $2 as well. That one hasn't been touched for probably seven or eight years. So it's been quite a while since we've done any for that, so.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve 7.4?
So move.
Mr. Raymer?
Second.
Mr. Espisette, second. Comments, questions?
I just kinda happened to get into the middle of a conversation down at Heartland Career Center with the bus drivers. Do we pay people extra for training and? Okay.
Yep.
Is that included in this?
That's a separate item that we've done, yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Espisette?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Hensley?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker?
Yes.
Missy, motion carries, 6-0. 7.5, Mr. Superintendent Whelan?
Okay, this is similar to the cheer camp and it's just a, you know, it, we, it's loosely associated with us. We do, a lot of times our coaches are the ones who put it on, but it is using our facilities and it's something additional. So it's just approving that pre-K to second grade league.
Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Brubaker? Mr. Hensley? Comments, discussion? I do have a question. This says 2023 Manchester Squire Fundamental Basketball League, pre-K through second grade, but then it says it's Manchester Boys Youth Basketball. It's their registration form. Is this open to all pre-K through second, or only boys?
My guess, this is the boys' one because the girls do something similar. So my guess is this is just the boys' program.
Okay.
Yeah, because the checks are going to boys' basketball. So my guess is this is the boys' league.
Okay. Linda, do you know, are they planning on doing one for pre-K through second?
I think it's at the high school, but it's on Sunday.
Okay. Alright, we got a motion and a second. I got my question answered, I guess. Anybody else?
Thanks to all the volunteers that put on these camps for the youth.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Espisette?
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker?
Yes.
Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Hensley?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion carries, 6-0, Missy. 7.6, approved budget transfer resolution.
Okay, so this resolution, a lot of schools use something very similar. All of the claims and everything have already been approved by the Board. But remember, the budget... but remember, the budget that we, that was provided was done about eighteen months ago. And so there's always things that are either over, typically over, and then you need to under, underspend in other areas to make it good. So we can't exceed what the board has appropriated for the operations fund or the education fund. We can't exceed what those numbers are. But between the individual line items, we may go over in some areas, and so then we need to find other areas to cut back from. And so basically, for the next couple of months, once the, the calendar year ends, we have time to fix where those are, because the individual line items do all have to end up showing positive. So this allows us to move money to another account from one of the line items that was already approved. So once again, it doesn't, it's not saying we're spending more money than what was approved in the budget. It's just moving some within the individual funds to make them all turn out to be positive.
Let me make the motion so we can have a discussion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to discuss with Mr. Hensley and Mr. Raymer, secondly.
So in the past, we have had this.
I mean, we wouldn't have had this, we would have just done it, and it would have been brought to the board for approval, correct?
No. Up until, usually, a, a school district would approve it at the same time as they do the budget, just to say this is what we're going to do. Some schools still do that and some don't, because one of the business managers that I was, talked to, said that you no longer even need permission to do the minor requests, and so they don't even, you know, have board resolution that says they can do the minor requests. It's just as, as the purchasing agent or the treasurer of the school district, they're allowed to make those moves to even out the books. Now, one of the things, and this is my conversation with another business manager today, is what they do is, on the major moves, they do bring that to the board afterwards and say, here's the major moves that we'd like to make. And so that would be in January, February of the main categories. It wouldn't be every single line item. It would just be the bigger, moving from this larger fund to this larger fund.
So can you define minor and major for me?
So the, it's, and unfortunately, part of the reason that they've done this is because they also continue to change what the, the codes, the numbered codes are for the accounts. So, so that's why some of the flexibility's been made. But, and under each major code, there's all of these minor codes. And so what, what they've allowed to do, and this is something I was working on today, is that under those minor codes for the major categories, you can make those adjustments. So it's like, you know, for salaries, there's salaries that go to the elementary school, there are salaries that go to the intermediate school, and there's salaries to go to the high school. So your salaries is the major category, and then all of those individual line items are the minor categories. So it's like, you know, making moves between those is, is not a problem, but then if you're moving money to salaries, that would be considered a major move. But moving them in between, whether it's money at MES or MIS, is a minor move.
So, so what has been assessed of this resolution in your mind?
Because we can't, so once the fiscal year is over with, all of, we have time to adjust what our budget is that got approved, you know, eighteen months prior, to make all of the major codes they need to be, or all the codes need to be in the positive. So we can't have negative balances in any of those small areas. So we need, like, we have to show that we didn't spend more than what was approved, even though it might not be in the category. So we do have time after the fiscal year is done. And it, it's like, you know, fu- fuel costs. Energy costs are a lot higher than what we had budgeted for. Well, we can't spend more than what, you know, was budgeted in operations. So there was other areas of operations that were cut back on to be able to pay for the additional fuel costs.
Do you have a certain example in your mind of what you'd, what you'd like to, of something we need to shift now in the amount of it? Because here, here's my problem. For four years, I sat here with people moving things from fund to fund in this school, and we put policies in place to kind of get out of the financial situation we were in. So I'm, you know, it's not a, really a trust issue. I'm, I'm, I kind of want to know what, you know, what's the negative side of this? And if that, you know, if that's the intent, or can we put, you know, is there some type of dollar limit we could put on this on the shifts that would make sense to you? Because, because the current situation in the budget, I'm gonna tell you, I'm, I'm real unhappy with what's going on. We, I mean, we'll get into that later, but like.
So Mike, I mean, would it be, would you be satisfied if after these moves were made, there was, that information was given to the board to, hey, this is what we did? Just because, I mean, I mean, I understand you need to know what's going on.
Physical responsibility, right? So I, I would at least want some information about what those moves are, whether, whether it's in within the categories or major. I just don't want to get back to where we're, we're throwing funds around in different funds and trying to keep it. We finally got a financial instrument that I can actually understand with this school, and I don't want to get back into the point where we're shifting things around all the time. And I'm not saying you're doing that, but I don't look at this stuff as just you. I look at, again, policies, like anything, anybody in that seat. So I'm just kind of wondering, what, you know, how big a shifts are we talking about here?
Well, obviously, with our fuel costs this year, it is a big shift. I mean, we didn't budget nearly as much as what we.
Talking a hundred grand? Is there some dollar limit we could put on there where I'd feel uncomfortable?
Well, back in, back in August, we had already spent what we had budgeted for our fuel costs, which was around seventy thousand dollars. So my guess is it's probably, you know, twice that now, so.
So Mike, I mean, when you say the limit, though, I mean, we have to move it. Like, there's not an option of not moving it, because we've spent the money.
Yeah, well, this, this resolution basically says move it, right? You've got the permission to move it. Are you comfortable with that, with the current situation we're in?
I guess I'm saying, yeah, I would want to know what we're moving, but we have to move it. I don't, like, there's not an option not to move it, right?
Saying that, but I'm, I'm with you. I'd like to know what it is, and if we, if we pass this resolution, basically, you don't have to tell us what you're with, right? So I'd like to see this modified to some point. I want to know what's shifting around and why in the budget.
I think there's a difference between, you know, us, I, I think you should be informed on it. I mean, that, that's not the issue. It's, it's allowing us to go ahead and do it. I mean, I, you know, like I said, that, you know, the minor funds, the, the person I talked to today said that, you know, that is granted to the business manager, whoever the treasurer is at the other, that, that the school has appointed to that position. Now, the, the major moves, and that's what they said, is what they bring to the board, is the major move, saying here's what the major moves are and have that approved. Now, one thing to keep in mind, the, everything's already been spent. Like, that money, like, it's already been spent. I mean, it, it's, it's, the transparency's important, I think it's, but, you know, we're, we're spending money.
Where he's at, and I, that's where I'm at. It's just, we want to make sure there's transparency, that we're, that we're being informed, that you, these transfers are occurring,
Yeah.
and that this isn't just a blanket, we're doing it and we don't have to tell you.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. That makes sense.
That is our concern, and so.
And there's a lot of, you know, when we sat down and went over the budget, I mean, there's tons of lines. I mean, and they continue to change what the categories are. There's tons of lines, so.
I understand, I mean, Tanya and you were in there with Mike and I, and we understand that, but, and I think the rest of you went through the same process, and it's, there's a ton of stuff in there, but.
Well, and I think maybe in the future, maybe we need to spend a little more time on that and not do it in twos, and maybe we need to look at things as a board, on, on, you know, with kind of what's going on here, so. I just, on that, I'd just like to see that we're, you know, I want to be informed about what we're shifting around. That's, that's all I'm saying.
And, and once again, like, with this, with this resolution, you know, once again, there's debate, out of habit, I think a lot of them go ahead and pass the resolution when they're passing the budget. But once again, the business manager I talked to today said, well, the state doesn't even require that anymore. It used to be something that the State Board of Accounts, when they did the audit, would check to make sure you had that. Now they said the minor transfers, school districts can do. It's the major ones that you would need, you would either need this, this resolution or, or to go to the board each time. So, you know, I'm fine with taking the major part out of that. Once again, I don't, I don't, I don't know legally.
Modified to say that you are going to inform us of major shifts or whatever. Mark, did you, did you put this together?
No.
Okay.
This is common lang, like, there's a lot of schools that use this exact same language. That's what I found, so.
Schools didn't set through four years of what I've set through, so.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just giving you my point of view on this. Is, is, I, you know, I, it's our response, physical responsibility is on the board. You know, I want to be informed when we're shifting things around, and not saying you're going to do what was done in the past, but we're not, it's kind of like I told you guys in that, you know, we had ten kids in my family, and me and my brother, by the time my mom got to us, she'd done seen it all, is what she told me, right? And that's kind of what I'm saying tonight, is I, you know, I don't want to start slipping back in bad habits, especially with what we're going to talk about a little later. You know, I just, I just want to be informed as a board member and know that we're going to know what that is. So if we just, I mean, I'm cool if you just want to, you know, if it's major, if we just communicate what's, what major changes and modify this, then I'd be good with this, so.
Yep.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to reiterate, but the, if we're informed of the majors, the need for the major transfers, I understand that, exactly what you're saying about those minors shifting within those, I, I, I think that's acceptable. It's these major moves that I, I don't want to just say, oh, yeah, okay, go ahead. I, I want that to come before the board and the board to say, yes, that, we understand the need, but thank you for bringing it to us to approve that.
Well, in the way this thing is written, it's pretty broad. It doesn't have, doesn't appear to have, says twenty-two, twenty-three budgets when necessary. With our current situation with no business manager, we have an interim treasurer appointed for the corporation, I just feel like maybe we need to approve the first sentence. The tre, the treasurer of Manchester Community Schools is hereby authorized to make transfers within funds and between funds within minor categories, and maybe set a dollar limit on that, and then transfers among major categories, appropriations, revenue necessary to allow for expenditures in the twenty-two, twenty-three budgets be done with prior approval of the board. And maybe a dollar amount could set the difference. You know, I, I don't know what you guys want to do, but, you know, I don't want to be told after the fact that something's already been done when there, you know, there could be three options on how we.
Hey, but I mean, the thing is, it is already done. Like, the money is spent. We can't change that at this point.
Isn't spent.
Yeah, it is.
That's not what this says. This, this says appropriations and revenue necessary.
So, so we, we had a, we had a budget, we had a budget that specified what we're going to spend.
Understand that.
We didn't do that, right? We spent differently than what that budget said.
Yes.
So all we're doing now is saying.
And those are minors, yeah, like you said, you can't have.
Minors and majors.
Red. But appropriations? You okay for them applying for an oppo, an appropriation without telling the board first? You know, if we're talking, you know, if we're talking fifty thousand dollars moving it from one to the other, that's one thing. If, if that's where you want to set it, that's where his other limit is. You start talking about moving a quarter million dollars around, I think the board needs to know about that beforehand.
It may already been spent, if you're taking it from one account to another. You're balancing accounts is what you're doing.
Correct, but I'm saying, it's, there's not an option, option to not do it. We've already done it. We've already spent it.
Well, would, you want to know where it's coming from?
Yeah, I want to, I want to know where it's going, but I'm saying there's not an option of not doing it. I want to be informed of where we ended up, but we can't.
Options.
We've already spent the money on diesel. How can we not spend it?
Okay, but there's a hundred and fifty categories that you can replace that money with.
But, but the money is already spent. Like, we can't spend it, like.
So you're, you got one point six billion dollars in the bank, you're telling me we've already spent that already? It's accounted for within the budget, but it's not spent yet.
What, what we're doing here is, at the end of two thousand and twenty-two, after the year is completely over, we have to look at what we budgeted for all of those categories versus what we actually spent in each of those categories. If we spent more in one of those categories than it, we had budgeted for, then we have to pull from one of those other categories that we did not spend as much money in, that we budgeted for, and move it over to here. So the money, we're not, like, if there's extra, we're not spending it on something else, because it's, the fiscal year is already done with.
And we can't, and we're not going to go over the budget?
We can't.
Right.
Like, we, like, that is, that is something we cannot do. And that's what, throughout the year, like, if we're going over in some areas, that's when we have to make cuts in other areas. Like, we just don't do certain things. I mean, that's the same thing you do at your household all the time. Like, if food is costing more, you know, then maybe you don't go out, you know, to the movies. I mean, you make those cuts on a regular basis, and that's what.
Great example. When I overspend in one category, having that information helps me understand why are we underspending, overspending in that category, which means I'm going to underspend in something else. And so that helps make adjustments and look for opportunities to cut that spending or do, you know, something different or something like that. So all I'm saying as a board member is I want to be informed of these shifts. That's, that's all I want. What?
Before it happens.
It's.
It's, it's got, I'm, what I'm saying is, it's going to happen. You can't not approve it.
There's always a choice.
Not really. I don't see how there's a choice.
The money's already been spent.
Take fuel. How much are we over?
I, I don't know.
Let's say a hundred thousand. Where are you going to take that from? I know what you're, you're rectifying the budget.
Wherever we, wherever we underspent on, and there's things that we did not purchase that we had budgeted for. It's just like, you know, when, when we talked about.
I want to know what those transfers are. That's all I'm saying on this whole thing.
And, and I'm fine with that. Like, that's not what I'm arguing. I'm, I'm saying that we're allowed, because we have a certain window of when we can clean up this budget. And if, and if we have to go through each board meeting and I need to go through and say.
Two, two.
So is that what you're wanting to do? Or it, I have to wait and then have a board meeting and say, okay, you know, can we move, even though we underspent in this minor category and we overspent in this one, are you fine with me moving that over? Because it has to come from somewhere, and it doesn't even matter really where it comes from, because it's already been spent. We can't, like, if we did not spend it on, you know, secondary education teachers, and so we move that money to primary education teachers, we're not then allowed to go back and hire a teacher from classes that were already taught in two thousand and twenty-two? Like, you can't go back and spend that money in those categories. Like, this is, this is a common thing for, for school finance. And, you know, I'm happy to bring someone in here who has done it a lot longer than I have to help you guys understand what that is. I'm just saying that this is how it works. This is perfectly allowable under State Board of Accounts and the DLGF. Like, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to be difficult here. I'm not trying to, you know, hide stuff from you. I mean, this is what every district does at the end of the fiscal year.
So to me, it makes a lot of sense to show, like, what the budget was and then what you had to move and what we actually spent. Like, seeing those two pieces is very informative to see where were we under, where were we over.
Mm-hmm.
That's all I want.
Right. But, but all I'm saying is, there's not, there's not really, in my mind, a, a need to approve anything, because it's already done. We can't not approve it, something we've already done. So all, all I would want to do is, I would pass that with the addition of, please tell us in the end where we ended up. On, on all the categories. Because then, that's, that's informative to me.
Explain the appropriations piece then. Why is that?
That's, that's the key word in this, though.
And, and I gotta, I can't pretend to explain what that difference is with why the word appropriations is in there. This is common phrasing. If that's the part, like, I can't, I can't appropriate money. common phrasing. If that's the part, like, I can't, I can't appropriate money directly without your guys' approval. So I don't know when it says appropriations, I don't know if, I mean, 'cause you guys have appropriated the money to certain, you know, categories. And so I don't know if that's where it's talking. I can't spend more money than what it says. Even if we have cash balances, I can't spend that without your guys' approval to spend that cash balance. Like, it's all been proof. So if the word appropriations is the issue, take that one out. I mean, you know, to me, once again, I used language that was very.
Don't take appropriations out. Anytime you're doing this sort of a transfer between my items, it is an appropriation. Keep it in there. I can't explain why that is either, but it is, it, you're still appropriating the money. Even if you move ten dollars in pencils to put it at ten dollars in the markers, that's still an appropriation.
So it doesn't mean spending, it just?
Yeah. It can be the transfer too.
Okay. So what about transfers from the education fund to operations?
We can't, we can't, that's not what this is saying. That takes board, that takes board action. Like, we can't move money within, between funds. We certainly can't, like, a, a true new appropriation, you have to do the ten-day notice. Like, you have to have a hearing and everything. Like, that's not what this is talking about.
Is there a modifier we should put in front of appropriations then, like a transfer appropriation, Mark?
Uh, most of the time they're called additional appropriations.
Well, how about you take this and modify it with what we're saying and?
I, I think the modifier could be one sentence at the end saying that any of these appropriations must be disclosed to the board at the next board meeting or at the board meeting in January.
Okay, fine.
If it's.
Cause I'm ready to move on. I'm hungry.
I'm trying to look up to see how the county council does it. And if you wanna get bogged down in that, go to their meetings a couple times and you'll see why each, doing each individual one is not a good idea.
I just don't understand why, why we haven't done this in the past. This is new. We've never done this before.
I'm not sure that you haven't done in the past. I know with the two thousand and twenty-two budget, you didn't, and that's why I was bringing it to it. Normally, you do it with the budget when you are bringing.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of transfers in the past on this school board in the last four years, and that's my major concern, you know, so. And I'm not, and it's not about you personally. It's just about the position. You guys ever look in the news when people are moving money around and all of a sudden somebody's going to jail for, you know, taking sixty thousand dollars out of funds and stuff like that? That's exactly what I'm talking about. I wanna know where the money's at in the school and when it gets transferred. I wanna know where it gets transferred to. So I'm fine with this thing as long as, like Raju said, put a, do what Mark said, put a sentence on the end if you would, and we're gonna be informed of the transfers or.
So, am I hearing you modify your motion then to table this and send it to Mark to have it rewritten? Put the modifiers in it?
You can approve it with that addition and then I'll modify it.
I'm not, I'm not doing that.
Well, I know we do have a window at which we could do this. And so the next meeting is, what, the second week in January? And so we don't have, like, that's taking up part of January to start making these adjustments to it. So, I mean.
Aren't we gonna have a meeting next week?
Yes.
How about we hit it then? Mark?
Yay, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you wanna modify your motion then, so we can get it into record? You opened it for discussion.
Okay.
So there's a.
To table, to table it till it's rewritten and bring it back to the.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to modify this, bring it back to the next meeting.
Mr. Raymer, do you second that?
Second.
All in favor? Signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Six oh, stable. On my computer tonight.
All right.
Seven point seven, Superintendent Wieland.
Okay, so we do have our returning administrators. I do ask that they receive the same raises what our teaching staff did. And then also renew their contracts. That is something we should have done a status quo contract in, in, in the sum, uh, over the summer, which we did not do. And so it's the same contract stipulations. It's just modifying their salaries, so.
Did we do the, the one-year people this summer?
Yes.
Okay, I knew, I was gonna say, I, I knew we did one of them.
I, I misunderstood how, like, who all needed to be renewed. So the one-year people we did, but these were all two years.
Okay, this is.
All motion approved.
Mr. Hensley, do I have a second? Mr. Raymer? Okay, and this motion, just to be clarified, is the, per the document in your, in your packet and to also include the people listed here on the administrators that are on two-year contracts to give them a one-year, is that correct?
No, it'll be.
One, one-year extension.
Yeah.
Left the word out. Big one. Okay, we got a motion in a second. Uh, roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Espisette?
Yes.
Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Hensley?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Six oh, Missy. Pay resolution, Superintendent Wieland.
Okay, okay. Um, so, uh, the pay resolution, this has to do with, um, we had, uh, several of our teachers who brought, brought in under the previous collective bargaining agreement, um, which did not allow us to give credit for previous experience with, that was, did not include, uh, teaching in a public school. So we did have some teachers who taught in private schools. Um, we also had teachers who came from industry. Um, and so that, uh, experience, while it was not teaching in a public school setting, um, was still experience that helped them become a better teacher in their content area. And so our previous collective bargaining agreement, uh, did not allow for, um, us to take that into consideration when we were starting, uh, with our, um, with what that initial contract is. Uh, recently, the state legislature did, um, allow for adjustments to be made as long as we had criteria. And, and really, the criteria, um, that I think is important is that years, that, that experience they bring to the table, even if it isn't as a public school teacher. So, um, we did have a handful of, of teachers who got brought in during that time, who did not receive, uh, credit for, um, their experience. And so, um, I met with each of them and went over, uh, what their experience was. Um, and while, you know, we can't, um, afford to pay them what I believe their experience is worth, um, I do think that, uh, we can pay them addition, some additionally, um, that is more of a reflection of, of the value that they brought to the corporation. Um, and part of what I did here is if I were to hire these same people, uh, coming in now, um, how would I evaluate them and where would I want to place them on the, on the pay scale? So it was a, it was a pretty tedious process because the other part is I, you know, had a, wanted to make sure that I stayed within the confines of our, of our current budget. Um, but these people are all very good teachers, um, and broad experience that, uh, our students definitely benefit from. And so it allows, uh, for, uh, me to ask permission to place them at a different place on our pay scale. So that's what I'm requesting.
Do we have a motion to support this? Mr. Raymer? Mr. Brubaker? Uh, in discussion. Are these, are these people part of the MTA?
Some of them, yes.
Mr. Huber, would you go to the podium, please? The forty-dollar question, you guys on board with this?
Yes, we, we, we talked about this, um, you know, as part of negotiations, we were trying to add this in the contract for future teachers to try and make this, you know, it only made sense to be equitable to look back. Um, we've also gone through it in discussion. Uh, we've met all those thresholds and we're really happy with that and that we're able to do this, um, you know, because, I, I, I mean, one of them is, you know, I, I don't wanna get into details, but, you know, when you have a teacher who's bringing basically a career's worth of experience in a field that they're gonna be teaching, they can't get credit for it. And that was, that was not only our, like, for a while, the state law didn't allow it, and that's just ridiculous. And, and thankfully, that's one thing the legislature fixed. Uh, they got it right this time in that respect, so we support it a hundred percent.
Any other questions for Mr. Huber?
And, and I'll just say, I do appreciate, um, the association's, uh, view on this because it is something that, you know, when we're bringing teachers in, there is a shortage of teachers. And, and, you know, some of the best teachers I've ever employed did not come through a traditional teaching program. Um, but, you know, really, when you look at it from, what do our kids benefit from, I really don't care what their background was as long as, you know, they have it to, to do what's best. And so I think we came up with some wording in the, in the, in the, uh, collective bargaining agreement that everybody was very happy with. Um, and, uh, it allows me some flexibility moving forward with those new hires. Um, but we did have this, this group that, you know, really, it wasn't, it, it didn't apply 'cause they, we weren't hiring them for the first time.
And do they have the graph? There, there was a graph that showed, and you could really tell that they're the outliers there. Um, and I appreciate the language the way it is because, um, you know, look, look, yes, a year of public school teaching experience is, is, is definitely way more applicable for most cases, but there is a lot of experience that builds up into it, so it's kind of a balance between the two. So I really, I think it's a really good balance and, um, I really gotta be able to work that out.
Thanks to your positive comment about the legislators, we do have to kinda tip our hat, right?
Yeah, I, I mean, this, I, I, I have a lot of complaints about them, you know that, but this is one they got right, so.
Thank you, Mr. Huber. Any other comments, questions? Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Espisette?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Hensley?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker?
Yes.
Six oh, Missy. Superintendent Wieland, seven point nine.
Okay, change of teacher classification. Um, at one of our previous board meetings, um, uh, Austin Wieland was approved to, as a teacher, to finish out the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Um, and it was made clear that it was just finishing out this year and that position would be reposted, um, for interviewing, uh, later on down the road. The request on this is to change that from a teaching position to a long-term substitute teaching position. Um, basically, we'll have the same responsibilities, but the contract is just different, um, on that, so.
Do we have a motion to support this? Mr. Hensley? Mr. Brubaker? Comments, questions, discussion?
One thing I do wanna add is that, um, and this has to do with our board's, uh, conflict of interest policy. Um, I do have a conflict of interest, um, Form One filed for him now, um, that, uh, obviously Austin is my son. Um, and so that's what the relationship is there. And so we do have that on file, which is what is called for on board policy, so.
Kyle, what's the differences in the long-term subcontract versus the teacher's contract?
Well, a true teacher's contract, you know, they're basically, under the collective bargaining agreement, have certain, you know, protections there. With the temporary, we were still saying that they're not, I mean, he wasn't going to be continuing anyhow. So I think it's more in the evaluation process. Um, I would still, you know, ask any administrator to evaluate a teacher whether they were, you know, a temporary, a long-term sub, whatever. If they're doing that, I think it's important to evaluate their performance along the way and provide them with constructive feedback. So it's really, for the most part, it is in terminology only, so.
Well, and our conflict interest policy's been in place, what, since two thousand and thirteen for reasons? So we're looking at that along with the, you know, if we modify that with, you know, the whistleblower as well.
Yep.
You know, we're, it's just the policy, you gotta cover every angle, you know? It's nothing personal with Austin or, or anyone else, right? It's just, the policy's been in place, so we're kinda working on that angle bit.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Espisette?
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker?
Yes.
Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Mr. Hensley?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion carries, six oh, Missy. Uh, seven one oh, we deleted. Uh, brings us to seven point one one, Superintendent Wieland.
Uh, this is just the student expulsion resolution, so the board, um, did have a, a hearing. And so the resolution is in your board packet, so you're either voting to approve this resolution or not approve this resolution. Did I explain that correctly, Mr. France?
Okay, so, yeah, just to be clear, a yes vote?
Is that you're agreeing with that resolution?
Right.
Yep.
All motion.
Mr. Hensley?
Second.
Mr. Raymer? Uh, really no discussion on this. We either approve it or we don't. Uh, roll call vote, Mr. Espisette?
No.
Mr. Brubaker?
No.
Mr. Raymer?
Hold on. Skip me.
I'm gonna vote yes. Mr. Hensley?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Raymer? Four to two, Missy. Motion carries. Uh, seven point one two was pulled. Uh, now we're at, uh, eight one A, which is a committee. We were invited to be part of a.
Dave, did you have a seven one three? I thought there was an addition. I could be wrong.
Yes, that's Mr. Hensley asked to put this on, seven point one three. Business manager job description?
Yep. Where are we with that?
The job description or the hiring of it?
Both.
Okay, the job description was completed and that was posted and everything. Um, we did not have, um, uh, a good response as far as applicants. I've been working on trying to generate more interest in it. Um, I was advised that a lot of times it's towards spring when some of those people who are currently employed are looking for making that shift and a lot of them aren't interested in mid-year. So I do think it's important to have, um, more than one applicant for a position that's this important, so.
What's the, what's the pay on it? Is it competitive?
It, it's very competitive. And, and really, that's flexible. That, that's something that that new person can negotiate. We're not tied into, um, any.
Are we putting an ad or range with the advertisement or?
Um, we did not, but they can also see exactly what we have paid. I, I mean, it's, it's, anybody who's in education administration knows that you can go and gateway and see what those, what we have paid that position in the past. So, no, I don't believe it was posted with the job description. Um, but it did say that, you know, basically, it's, it's based on experience and on, um, and on credentials. And so I, I believe we have it posted consistent with what other ones are and, um, our past, uh, two business managers have been very competitive with the, with the rates, so.
Now, we need to get somebody in that position.
What are we paying the interim?
It's a daily rate, and I don't remember what it was. It's, um, it was in your board packet, uh, from the time when we approved that.
What, what exactly is the interim doing?
Uh, day-to-day, um, work that we need done that would fall into the business.
He's not looking at the budget at all?
Well, he's not the one who built the budget. He looks at the budget itself and where we are currently with this year's stuff. So he's actually, um, helping me a lot with the projection piece, which was not something that Tanya and I had, had experience with before. And so, um, that's something that he's working on because we wanna see, you know, based on projection-wise, you know, where are we with our funds next year? Where are we two years down the road? Cause really now is when we need to start making decisions that impact the next two years. And so, um, the projection piece is what he is wanting to do, um, or that I'm wanting him to do. Um, but then he's also working with current budgets with grants and things and making sure we're staying. But then he's also working with current budgets with grants and things and making sure we're staying compliant with that, so.
Who's got their hand on the financial wheel is, I guess, what I'm trying to figure out.
He, he's a big part of it, but I am too, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments, questions, discussion? Okay. Seven twelve, seven one three. So I guess we're at eight one A, which is, the board members were sent a invitation to join the, I'm going to call it the open letter committee, I don't know what they call themselves, but I was asked to put it on the agenda for a discussion item.
So there's a, well, we found out a county education committee, and Rick, you're on that?
I have agreed to serve on the study group.
Is it now called a study group?
I think originally it was. I was, I could have come with, I could have come a little more prepared to explain what it is. I don't really know what it is, but I did not know it was going to be an addition to the agenda. So I'm, I just know there's a group of people in Wabash County that are going to look at education. I think our board should have a representative or someone there listening to the conversation.
Well, I'd agree with that.
Yeah, I agree. So, Rick, are, are you wanting to represent Manchester Community Schools?
No, no, I just would like someone from our board to be part of the group. Doesn't need to be me at all, actually. I would defer if someone had some interest, but I'm willing to do it if, if no one else has strong interest.
Well, just a point of clarification, all the board members got it. Mr. Hensley reached out to them and asked them to come to this board meeting and explain exactly what the committee was about, what their mission was, what their agenda was. And they declined. I personally, as a president, reached out and asked some questions, and I'm just wondering if you did when, when you were approached?
Read the letter, had a conversation with the organizer.
Okay. Well, the reason it hasn't been brought up before this is when I had the conversation, I was told that it was going to be a 24-member committee, and they were only putting six educators on it. And if it's about education in Wabash County, I guess my first thought is, why aren't the superintendents doing it? And two, it was also explained to me that they were seeking corporate donations to hire an administrator to run the committee. Well, my problem with that is, it's my problem, when you hire someone, you either give them a job description or you give them an agenda. And if this is a study group and you, and you took corporate donations to hire someone to run it versus putting a group of people who live and breathe education every day and let them pick somebody to run the committee, it truly becomes about education versus I don't know what this is about. So it's a discussion item for tonight. Your January meeting, you guys get to make your appointments to the different committees and part department and all that. So I guess that would be the time to do that. But I just wanted to make it real clear that if it's about it, you know, that's why I backed away from it and they wanted me to sign it, and I wouldn't sign it. Because if it's truly about education, the people that live and breathe it, especially after COVID, should be the ones making the decision and having the most input. And if you're going to have a 24-member committee, why wouldn't you put 13 educators on it if it's truly about education? And I'll get off my soapbox now. Somebody else got something?
Yeah, so, so I've got no problem with the committee itself. I think there's synergies within the school corporations we need to look at, busing, et cetera, you know?
Absolutely.
Different things. I mean, you, you look at that, it's kind of the way it's been put together. You have elected officials. So they're, you know, my neighbors surround me and, you know, you run for an office and you, and you get in this seat. It just seems like there's subversion going on about education. And I would, you know, I'd highly recommend to the organizer of that committee that they invite the three superintendents that run these school corporations onto that committee. Because that's, I think that's very critical that, you know, they're involved, and I'd like to probably see two board members. Rick, there's no problem with you being on that committee. I have no problem at all with you being on that committee. It's just kind of, kind of finding out about, like, yeah, I did, you know, to be honest, I told you, kind of feel a little betrayed, you know? But that's okay. We, you know, we do need to look at things within the county. And so if it's a committee or a study group or whatever it is, I just think it could have probably been put together a little bit better. And I, and I do believe that the superintendents ought to have an invitation into this committee in some way, shape, or form, so.
Well, and I got to be honest, you know, it, it seems like the letter was sent out and then there was kind of a holding period. Because I don't, I, I have not had a single conversation with anybody who signed the letter, so I'm not going to pretend like I, I know what it is. But I've, I've been a part of education in Wabash County for a very long time, and I've been a part of a lot of conversations with a lot of people who did sign the letter and a lot of people who didn't sign the letter. And so I, I know there's a lot of opportunities. If we have conversations and, and keep an open mind and look for ways to, you know, collaborate on things that can save us money but also provide more opportunities for kids. And so, you know, I'm, I've been invited to a lot of different committees and rarely do I know exactly what I'm walking into going, but at least I'm there to hear what they have to say. So, so, you know, I would, if I was invited, I would absolutely be there. And, you know, I would, I would absolutely support, you know, board members being there. And I don't even think it's necessarily they're speaking on the board's behalf or their behalf. It's just being represented in the space and knowing what's going on. Because, you know, once again, I mean, there may be, you know, a direction that they're going in that, that we want no part of. But if we don't know it's, it's, that's even being talked about, then, you know, how can we make that decision? So, you know, that, the committee or whatever it is has absolutely no authority on anything. Like, this is, our school board is the one who makes decisions for this corporation. But I do think if, if there's a conversation going on, that we should have people there to at least keep us informed on that, so.
And I agree with both of these gentlemen. There is some synergies that could be done, especially with, in AP classes. You know, maybe two school districts share the cost of a calculus teacher. And one year it's online at this school and the next year this school's online, or busing, and there's lots of other things. But really, when we stop and think about it, other than a few people sitting at this table, we don't live and breathe this. We're not in the classrooms every day. So I would just suggest to you guys, if you, if you decide to do this to the board, maybe you put a couple of teachers in there. Instead of having two board members, maybe you reach out and put a, put a teacher and a board member in there so that at, at least we got people in there that are, are living and breathing this every day. Because it's different than it was five years ago. It's different than it was 10 years ago, the world that they live in in the classroom, so. Like I said, but that's up to you guys for next month.
And I'm sure, you know, everybody involved in this are good people, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
And I believe they have good intentions. It's just, you know, there's a, there's a, probably a better way to communicate this. And I would have really appreciated if a group that did sign that letter came in and talked to the entire board, right? Because we have to function as one. And it's kind of funny, you know, you talk, you all get into legislation update, but, you know, we're strapped by basically the sunshine law, right, that we can't meet more than three people, you know, on a board. And that, and who else is, you know, where else does that apply except on school board members? So, you know, it's got, you know, it's, everyone else can talk and everyone else can meet and talk about education except school board members, you know? And it has to be done in public. So I'd appreciate it if everybody else kind of followed the same rules we have to.
Rick, if, as far as I'm concerned, if you want to go, I, I'd support that 100%.
Well, yeah, a couple of points, Mike. I never intended to betray, and Mike, you and I can talk about that after. But I will, if the next communication I get, right, I will absolutely keep everyone informed of when meetings are. I mean, I haven't been to a meeting. I haven't had any conversation in over a month, so, yeah, I'll-
Well, and that's probably a strong word. I'm just being honest with you, right?
Yeah.
You know, we function, there's seven of us and it's hard. You know, keeping this board together and functioning is a, it is a challenge. You know, that young lady, I wasn't kidding, you know, she likes headaches. When she grows older, jump on here, you know? But it's like, like, it just seems to me like there's so many external influences now.
Yeah.
Working to tear this board apart, you know, I just can't understand, you know, I just, so. But there, we definitely, you know, there definitely has to be some meetings. There's definitely, you know, I'd even like to see some shared resource on mental health that would actually do something about it versus talking about it all the time or not talking about it, you know? So anyway, we can move on.
Okay, Heartland update. The other school districts involved chose not to move on the resolution that was presented. They took no action whatsoever. And Superintendent Whelan and this board, I'd like to thank you guys for jumping on that and trying to fix a problem. Unfortunately, what's going on right now is it's kind of like four bulls in a pasture and there's only one tree to rub your horns on. Part of them want to use the original 1965, we all pay one-fifth, and the others want to do the ADM figure for the amount of students. So meanwhile, back at the ranch, after four years, the roof still needs to be fixed. The HVA still needs to be, HVAC still needs to be fixed. Everybody knows that we're running out of, out of space down there. Everybody acknowledges it. Everybody acknowledges what a great resource it is. But yet we got four bulls in the pasture up trying to rub on the same tree, so nothing's getting done. You know, Mark Hobbs raised a million dollars to try and put an addition in down there. You know, somebody needs to file a freedom of information request and find out what happened to that million dollars. Because it would go a long ways in fixing the roof and it would go a long ways in fixing the HVAC. But again, I would really like to thank you guys for jumping out there, supporting that. It is a great countywide resource. And I under, you know, I understand budgets and all that and why this group wants to do that. But at the end of the day, Mike teaches down there, he can tell you, the building's starting to crumble. No money's been put in it since the early 1970s. So I guess my challenge to the new board is try and give some direction, you know? Kyle, maybe you can do some arm twisting, but, you know, I, I'd be sorely disappointed if the day comes that we have to start telling kids no because we're still out of space. That's just a sad state, so that's my Heartland update.
You know, to that point, Dave, we just, so the 1920 kids in the 1967 class, we just bypassed around that area and found space for $400,000 worth of equipment that Dent Sands University donated to do, you know, level one through four. The same thing we're doing over here, level one, level two in Saka, probably one of the biggest needs in industry. But I will, one of the, you know, to go into legislative and, and kind of merge that, one of the challenges that, that we're facing and that, it's kind of like, you know, you got your hands full on the budget, right? Because the wages and stuff, we want to increase wages, we want to pay people fair, but you also have private industry that we compete against with everyone, you know? But, you know, all the way from, you know, bus drivers, some teachers are leaving the field. One of my biggest concerns, and we're putting the, you know, kind of leading this group or working with this group in South Bend, putting a pretty large CTE center together, and one of the concerns for that center and one of the concerns for Heartland currently is, how do we, you know, you can have the greatest facilities in the world, you can have all the equipment in the world, but nothing happens without a great instructor, right? And we all know the value adders are the educators within these buildings. And so one of the things I'd like to bring up in, in legislation, I'm going to kind of throw this at them and I don't know where it'll go. But one thing I witness in CT, the CTE world is the Perkins Funds, which are federal funds, are, are highly underutilized because of some of the constraints and restrictions on the spends on that. And I, and I challenge, you know, I had a good conversation with, with Andy, you know, Andy Zay, you know, Jim, Jim Banks. I would, I would challenge the legislators, if there's a way, and it's probably going to have to come from, from, you know, Washington, is to, is to redistribute maybe 25% of those Perkins Funds that we could actually use on salaries, you know, to increase, you know? I guess it wouldn't necessarily just have to be the CTE world, but somewhere, we're going to have to figure out how to be competitive to put good instructors into these, into these positions. And you, and yes, they, you know, they did do a good job allowing compensation, right, for subject matter expert or additional experience and stuff like that. When I look at these unused funds, my, the question behind my mind, I still haven't got an answer, is where do those funds go that are unused? Are they going back to the federal government? Do they go into a state fund or something like that? So my thing in legislation today would be try to throw a solution out there to help us all that, where we can actually fund these instructors. Because without them, you know, it doesn't matter what facilities or equipment you have, right? The kid, you know, it's, it's not going to go, so that's all I have to have in legislation, so.
And to that point, I'd just let everybody know, we've lost four instructors at Heartland since school started to private industry. I mean, they walk in, you know, they walk in, you can be the, the most loyal teacher in the world and dedicated. If somebody walks in the door and says, here's 40 grand more in three weeks, more vacation, I know what I'm doing. I mean, we, we, we can't compete with that, you know? And, and the skills that those kids are learning down there are just phenomenal. Matter of fact, I guess I can announce this, the kids are actually going to start doing actual manufacturing for orthopedic firm, the first two steps in turning a piece of metal into a knee. The company's going to do it with Heartland. The kids are actually going to be building something that's got an FDA sticker on it. And, you know, their, their name will be on it, you know? When they start out with a piece of metal and they go to the finished knee, every time somebody does something, there's a piece of paper. So for every knee, there's a ream of paper that goes with it. And these things are going to start out with Heartland's kids' names on them. And that's going to happen here right after the first year. So, I mean, they, they do some pretty great things down there with that. Unless somebody else has got anything, I'll turn it over to the superintendent for his comments.
Okay, so a lot to be happy about. We're finishing up the first semester and I feel like it's gone incredibly well. We did have the groundbreaking for our, our building project last Friday, and I thought that was a great event. Especially the weather was not very good, but we had a lot of people. And then, you know, first day of construction, they cut our, you know, internet to our building. And so I'm looking forward, if this is day one, I just look forward to what's going to happen moving forward. But I, I, I'm really excited about that part. It can only go up, so, but, you know, that, that's exciting. We've been talking about it for, for multiple years now. And so to get that project started and, and really, you know, moving forward with improving our school safety, but also our academic programming is huge. And, and, you know, to, to Dave's point, you know, I, you know, enrollments in the areas are going down. But Heartland Career Center enrollment is going up, which complicates things. Because it's like, if, if schools are getting less money, but more students are going there, it's like, how do we invest in that facility when we're receiving less money to invest in that facility? So it's a complicated situation. I certainly don't envy the board's trying to figure that piece out because all of us are in different financial situations. And that's why I think it's important to have, you know, community support and community groups who are looking at this. I mean, I would love it if this group realized that one of the best things we do together is Heartland Career Center and, and decides, hey, you know, let's put some money into this, or let's help support some of the programming there because that is benefiting more than just Manchester kids or Wabash or North. It's, it's benefiting all of us. So I think there's a lot of positives that could come out of a group like that, and I hope that that's what happens. Two weeks ago, I did attend the, the superintendent's conference down in Indianapolis. And I do want to thank the board. Part of my contract is that you do include financial support in there for me to grow professionally. It was a great opportunity for me to, to learn about what is-
Um, it was a great opportunity for me to, to learn about what is going on right now. Um, some legislative things that I need to be aware of, um, but also just networking with other superintendents who um, I learn a lot from. So uh, thank you for, you know, continuing to support my development as a superintendent. Um, the last thing I wanted to discuss, even though this isn't the last board meeting for a couple of our departing uh, board members, we do get to have one more because of some things we still need to fix. But um, we do have some uh, gifts for you. Um, the good thing about having another board meeting is there are some that haven't come in the mail yet. And so we'll have some more gifts next uh, next Thursday. But um, I think you'll really like these, uh, and they are the same, so you'll get the same bag. So uh, the first one, um, you get a peace, love squires mug. Uh, these were designed and created by members of our RISE classroom. And so a huge credit to Mrs. Vogel and the work that those students do. Um, you also have, they also designed this and it says, thank you for your service to Manchester Community Schools. And I know sometimes I don't have enough mints out on the tables here, so I went ahead and made sure you had um, those as well. Um, and then last one is more symbolic from, from me to you guys is, um, you must be nuts to wanna be a board member. And so I did wanna include that, so uh, there is some more, but um, we'll just see those on Thursday. So um, truthfully, you know, I appreciate uh, the work that you guys have done. Um, you know, you did hire me, which I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but I do appreciate you guys showing the confidence um, in that. But also, you know, the support you've shown for, for our students. You know, when you look at our vision statement and it talks about uh, safety and also, um, you know, providing academics, opportunities for all students, I, I think that's what we've done. I think that our board has embraced what we do at Heartland Career Center probably more than any board before you, um, which is really important. I think you've embraced uh, the work we've done with students, um, you know, who uh, may have disabilities, who we are um, finding ways to include, um, you know, our English language learner population. I think you've um, gone a long way to, to develop that, um, and also our, our dual language initiatives. I think you guys have shown that you're supportive of all students and looking for ways to um, to engage all students. So thank you both for all of your work.
Are you done? Board comments?
So we're, I, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Dave and Raju for everything they've done. They've answered several questions for me and I appreciate that, thank you for your service.
Mr. Shaw, is there anything you wanna say?
Uh, it, it's been an honor to be on this board. It's been a pain in the butt, but uh, it, I've learned a lot and I've grown a lot as, as a person and um, as a board member, I think. Like, this is a fantastic school system and I'm glad to have had a, a little part in it. Appreciate all you guys have done and, and working with you as well. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just wanna say, Dave, Raju, spent a lot of time together the last two years and the last several months on this building project. I just wanna say thanks.
Okay, um, I guess it's my turn. First thing, I guess I'm gonna answer Kyle's question for him on whether he was a good hire or a bad hire.
Oh geez.
Here you go, here's a quarter, anyway. You can flip it in the air and call it, you decide.
That's how I make most of my decisions during the day, so I appreciate that. Um, the uh,
yeah, this job changes you. I know I'm not the same person that sat down in this, one of these chairs four years ago. Number one, my hair wasn't near as gray. Robert's not here tonight, but I'm gonna go ahead and say this anyways because uh, the uh, meeting's being recorded since we can't live broadcast it. Robert brought a unique perspective to the board. I don't know that the previous board that I served with, if our attention to the arts and choir and the things that he's so passionate about, uh, it just, it, it brought a unique perspect, perspective to the board, uh, to Mr. Brubaker, Mr. Booker, Mr. Raymer. I can't thank you guys enough. You were like a breath of fresh air when you walked in here. Uh, we had a lot of things that were in the works and when we brought you up to speed, you got right on board, you know? We, we fixed our credit rating, you know, which made some of these projects possible. I just, I can't thank you guys enough. It, it was really rewarding. And to these two guys to my left here, you know, uh, especially this guy right here. He tried to talk me out of being the president at Heartland and the president here in the same year. Note to any incoming board members, don't do that. Uh, that was, that was just way too much. But the two, the leadership that these two have shown to me with their business background is, is made this job a lot easier. I don't know if I should really mention this or not, but I'm gonna, uh, there's not too many board members that are involved in hiring two superintendents and, and three interim superintendents in a four-year term. I wouldn't wish that on anybody, but I think we got the right guy in the place now. And as the boards go forward and he's got a good team behind him, it's uh, I'm proud to have been able to be a part of all of that. With that, unless somebody else has got something else, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're out of here. Thank you, Kyle. Uh, board, Tuesday, five fifteen.